Welcome you all here tonight. Before we begin the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. Thank you for the city we live in and for the people we get to serve. God, I just ask that you give us wisdom tonight as we all make decisions that impact others. God, we trust you for that and ask you to bless this evening now in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's regular meeting of Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, May 14th, 2019. We do have large print agendas available. Mike is holding them up there if that would be helpful to anyone. So now I'll ask our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
You really are.
I am.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rick Evans?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Kathy J. Cox?
Ernest Cate?
Here.
All right, thank you.
I don't control that, do I? Volume on that.
We're at item four on the agenda. This is the portion of each council meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our citizens. If we have any residents that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda, please feel free to come forward to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and ask you to keep your comments brief. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item not on tonight's agenda already? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, the approval of minutes. Council, if there are no additions or changes, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure? What do we got? We just only got an option A because there are no...
Right, no ordinances.
Ordinances, okay.
Option A.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Six, zero.
All right, thank you. Item seven. A resolution approving appointments to the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Springdale. This is a reappointment of Dusty Graham. Dusty was currently serving on our housing commission and his term has expired. I think the commission would like for Dusty to continue on that for another term. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All right, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Very six, zero.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and read number eight. Item eight, a resolution making appointments to the Springdale Library Board. I think we are reappointing four. And Marcia is here, if you have any questions. But these are the recommendations that have been given to me. And I would entertain a motion to approve these appointments per the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Very six, zero.
All right, thank you. We certainly want to thank Joy Drummond, Zelda Parson, Felice Barrett, and Betty Andrew for their reappointment, willing to serve on the library board. And of course Dusty Graham on our resolution earlier for the Housing Authority Board. Item nine. I'm going to turn over to our city attorney.
Thank you. This is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to vacate a portion of East Price Avenue. And this would set the public hearing by statute for June the 11th. And this is the portion of Price Street coming off of Spring Street going east. And this is in connection with the new criminal justice complex.
Option. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Very six, zero.
All right, item 11. I'll go ahead and read it. Oh, we're on 10? I'm sorry. Well, then go ahead, Ernest. You knew that because it was your item.
This is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon a portion of a drainage easement in the City of Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas. This sets the public hearing for June 11th, 2019 as well. This is a portion of a drainage easement at the intersection of Thompson and Highway 264. There's a new development going in there. And they're changing the way part of the drainage is being done. So it would require a portion of the drainage easement to be vacated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone else in the room?
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Very six, zero.
Item 11. Now, we're at item 11. A resolution authorizing the purchase of car cameras for the police department. This was discussed, it actually came up as part of a presentation by Chief Peters. Chief, you might come on up this way during Police and Fire Committee last Monday night. And very good presentation, by the way. Thank you. But the next day, council member J. Cox called me and asked if there was any way we could go ahead and put that on the agenda tonight. And it is on here. I don't disagree. I think, I mean, bottom line is if y'all do decide to make a decision tonight, we'll just get them two weeks earlier than we would have. So...
Mayor, my only problem is that it was not an item by itself...
Right.
...to the committee. It was part of a presentation, which was a good presentation, and it is an important item. But it was just part of a general discussion. And during that discussion, the issue of how we were going to pay for these came up. So at that time, it was the desire and the vote, I don't know we actually voted on it, but it was clearly the desire of the committee to move it to the next committee meeting as its own item so we could have a more detailed discussion on how to pay for these. So if it was an emergency, I'm not sure why it wasn't its own item that night and why it wasn't presented as an item that had to be dealt with that night. And if a committee member felt like it was so important that it needed to come forward tonight, then it should have been dealt with that night. And it wasn't. And so I'm not sure how we bypassed the committee and got it set on tonight's agenda.
First of all, it being a resolution, not an ordinance. There's not, I agree, we take it.
Well, anybody can bring in an ordinance or a resolution at any time. I understand that.
Right. So...
I apologize for being late.
We just started.
I understand, but I walked into what I think was something I must have started.
What I did relate to the council was that I got a call from you the next day asking that we go ahead and move it forward, if we could go ahead and move it forward tonight.
And that's, I was going to clarify it. If you wanted to know where it came from, that's where it came from. And Jeff, to be honest with you, it was because we talked it in committee about this.
That's what?
We talked in committee about this. And when it became known that 50 cameras were not working on these cars, with all of the conversation that we've heard nationally about police and some of the claims that have been made as they tried to keep the peace and do the things that we ask as a community. I went to home that night and I actually started thinking about it. When we go to the trouble, I'm thinking about it from my perspective as a citizen and as a representative of this city. If I'm going to ask somebody to go out there and risk their lives for me every single day and we have a tool in which that could really solve somebody's claims that they were mistreated or that the police didn't do their job or maybe the police did do something they were not supposed to do? It really bothered me enough to call Amelia, who's chair of the committee, and ask if she was okay with me bringing it forward. I called the ordinance chairman, Mike, asked if he was okay. And that's how it got on this agenda for this evening. It is truly because of the safety of the officers and the people that we ask to go out in this community and protect us.
Yeah, and we had discussion about cameras that night. And I think it was clearly the general consensus of the committee that dash cams are important. And we all seemed to agree that that's something we were going to have to deal with and we needed to do it. My problem was, is we also felt like it was an important enough issue that we needed more time to consider how to pay for them. $310,000.
Yes.
And so now it ends up on our council meeting without having any committee discussion other than briefly about how to pay for them. So I just don't see...
That was part of the conversation.
I mean, I understand that they're an important item. The chief did not bring them forward as an emergency situation though. And so I'm just not sure why we're not having a discussion on how to pay for them.
Well, I was hoping that discussion would be this evening as part of this conversation.
That's typically what committee meetings are for.
And to your point, I thought that Ricky had a good idea that evening that we could discuss tonight because there's about a half a million dollars that is not going to be used for salaries this year for police that is already budgeted. So we take this one-time cost out of it. This is not anything, by the way, I didn't talk to Mike Chief Peters about this prior to bringing this forward. So he cannot be included in my idea. He just presented it.
Well, it might have been good to have his thoughts.
Okay. I'm telling you, Jeff, the reason I did it is exactly as I stated. I think if it was my family member or anybody that I sent out, even a friend or an associate, once it became public knowledge that there aren't cameras, there are some mischief makers in this city that would have a really good time. One expense, one-time expense of $310,000. Okay? In my opinion, it's a lot of money. I agree. One lawsuit could cost us far much.
I agree, cameras are important.
So that's what I'm suggesting, as Ricky did.
After I got the call from Kathy, I took a couple of days because I wanted to check with Chief Peters and see if moving it forward two weeks would actually make a difference in how quickly we could get the camera. I had my doubts about whether it would. I think you had your doubts when we first talked. But then after you checked on it, it sounded like they could start sending them the week we ordered them. So I went back and told Kathy that and said, "Well, it actually would make two weeks difference." So for what that's worth, I do agree with Jeff that, and you didn't say this, Jeff, but the rush is, it's not a, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, it's not a life-safety issue, but it is a liability issue.
Yes. First of all, I very much appreciate the council's support. I do. And actually, I didn't expect this type of support on this issue. When this first came up and the mayor called me, I told him that our previous experience had been about a two-month order time. And that if we wanted to have the conversation in committee, I had no issues with that. It was just a two-week delay. When we got ahold of the company and told them our situation and your desire to maybe move forward quicker, they said that they would fast-track this and get us cameras within a week, which really surprised me. I wasn't expecting that.
I assume they could still do that?
Yes.
If we had further discussion on it?
Yes.
So, yeah, it really does end up just being a two-week difference.
Well, actually, about two weeks.
Well, it doesn't make any difference. We do it two weeks or now. But to fill in the blank, I suggest we take these funds out of the general fund.
Which is basically...
The salary savings?
Yep, out of the general fund.
Chief, was it 55 you needed or was there a number 80 somewhere that would have covered all the cars? Because some of them, I think in the video you showed us last week, it was pretty vague. And the 55 just takes care of what doesn't have cameras, right?
The 55 is the number of cameras that we lost the first week in April. To get rid of that entire group of cameras that are more than 10 years old, it would be 75, I believe.
So 20 more?
Is that where the 310 comes from?
The 310 is for the 55.
310 plus tax?
Plus tax, yes.
I thought the second number was 80, Chief.
It is 75 car cameras and four interview room cameras.
Okay, but that price of four...
$447,815.
That's for however many cameras that is to replace all of that generation camera?
That would replace every camera by that manufacturer.
Only reason I bring that up, and I certainly don't want to just spend to be spending, but I think from the video we saw, if we ever had a liability issue with those cameras we've got now, I don't know that we could do anything with it. I mean, it was pretty vague and pretty hard to make heads or tails out of anything. How much more would it be for the, do you have a number for if you did the 75?
$447,815. That's in your packet, I believe.
And that's also plus tax, correct?
Yes, that does not include tax. That includes shipping, handling, but everything but tax.
Is there any advantage to buying the additional cameras if that's the wish of this council now versus waiting, since we have some, as I think Mike suggested?
I think there's a 20, was it 20,000?
Yes, they discounted the order by $20,000.
My thinking is we have the same liability that we talk about not having them as having some of these with poor quality. Just a thought. I don't mind taking half of it out of the general fund and half of it out of the salary savings if that's...
That's the same thing.
Would all be out of...
Out of CIP.
About CIP?
Yeah. If that's an option or thinking, just thinking outside the box for a second.
Let me get a little clarification as we discuss this because since we're all out in the open here. When we did the budget, you know, there was that $2 million gap that if I'm remembering it right, because I'm trying to determine how, if we take them out of the salary savings, how it might impact us at the end of the year if we don't have the $2 million in savings. And Wyman, I see, stood up. My recollection is that it was the decision of this council at budget time that however much of that $2 million, if we had to dip into that $2 million, it was going to come out of the reserve, not CIP. Do y'all remember it that way or is that just, am I dreaming that? And the reason I want to make that clarification is because if by taking it out of salary savings, whether it's the $310,000 or the $447,000, if taking it out of salary savings, if we don't make that much up, because we'd actually be having to make up $2 million plus however much we spent on these cameras in order not to have to touch that $2 million. If at the end of the year, we've got to use some of that $2 million, it's not coming out of CIP, it's coming out of the reserve. Is that, and I think that's an important distinction that we need to be sure about. And that's why I'm asking if y'all remember that the same way I do or we can go back and look at the budget, when the budget was passed.
So I think what you're saying is because we generally have a savings, but by not having a full...
Right.
...harding staff, that we've been able to keep from having to use that,
Exactly.
...dip into that reserve. But if we use it all and don't have a savings, then we may actually have to, it's possible. We don't know, but...
We don't know. You're right.
Possibly might have to dip into the reserve.
Wyman, is that, are we thinking right there?
I can pretty well predict each year that the departments aren't going to spend 100% of their budget.
Right.
So we budgeted $1 million more in expenses than we did in revenue. And at the end of March, we were $600,000 ahead of where I predicted. So we're $1,606,000 behind balancing the budget. And if you use the salary savings at this point, then we could wind up at the end of the year $2 million in the hole.
Well, or...
But now, we expect...
Having to dip into the reserve.
It's more likely that we would have to dip into reserves. Or you could buy them out of reserves right now. I mean, there are a lot of ways to do it.
Of course, if we had all the sales projections, then there will be no deficit.
Yeah, and I think this early in the year, and Wyman may disagree with me here, but if we have to adjust at the end of the year, we have to adjust, this early in the year, not knowing we're going to have the internet sales tax beginning to collect in July, won't report until August, so we'll have four months. We don't know what that'll be, what kind of bump that'll be in our sales tax. You know, taking it out of the salary savings does not give me as much heartburn this early in the year.
But the other thing is, is that there's other options that we're not even considering. Again, because I think we're going to have more of a discussion. The other options are, and maybe the chief is not in favor of this, but the other options are the different funds that the police department has. Drug forfeiture and such, I don't know, is there two drug forfeiture funds, Chief?
That's correct. We have a federal and a state.
Yeah. You know, that could be considered. Well, you know, I've heard also that your hope is to use some of that money for the firing range, you know. But at least that would have been a discussion that we should have had rather not to pay for some of these out of those funds.
That's true. I don't know that we'll have any of those answers in two weeks as far as the firing range. But again, that money can be moved also. I mean, you know, I mean, it can... Whatever we order them with, we're not writing it in stone that it has to stay out of that fund. We can still, we could move money out of them.
So if we order them now, when do we have to start paying for them?
We're going to start taking delivery within a week. And I expect to...
That's when we'd have to start paying for them, basically?
Yes, when they deliver them, we'll have to start paying for them.
Are we going to pay for them 20 at a time or do we pay them the whole order upfront? We probably pay them the whole order.
Probably the whole order.
But they're only shipping them to us 20 at a time?
Well, actually, I don't know the answer to that. I would assume if we're going to pay the whole order, it would be when they all arrive because we normally don't pay for things until we have them in our possession.
So it would be a matter of three or four weeks?
Three or four weeks, yeah.
Because they were going to send the first 20...
And then 20 every week.
And then 20 every week after until the order's filled?
Yes.
Well, then what I would like to do, if the senses of the council is to go ahead and do this, and I would hope that we could just pay for what we get initially out of whatever we decide to pay it out of. And then we have further discussion at the next committee meeting, which is next week, right?
Yes, Monday night.
As to how to pay for the balance of them. Can we do that?
No, what balance?
Well, it's because you said we'd only pay for the first 20. No? We have to pay it all?
When they're all delivered, we'll pay and we get the discount. That's what you say.
I think we commit, we've got to commit to the whole order, whether it's...
Well, I know we could commit, but just at the next committee meeting, figure out how to pay for it. Can we do that or not?
That's fine. Can we do the resolution that way, Ernest?
How about this?
So just taking out the general fund? We can take it out of the general fund. If I get a second to it, we can vote on it.
And then if we want to adjust that...
We can always change the line later.
Wait.
Well, that's, all right.
I made the motion.
Is that for 55 or 75?
It didn't, your motion didn't say. You want to do the whole?
Whole hog.
Okay. Well, it's more than 75. It's 79 from what you told me.
75 car cameras and four interview room cameras.
Yeah, the amount is what matters there, yeah.
I will second that.
So we're okay with at least revisiting this...
Yes.
...committee meeting on how to finish paying for them?
Make sure we get that on the committee agenda for police and fire.
We're going to, there's a motion and a second to approve this for the $447,000. Is that right?
That'd be police and fire committee or finance committee?
Then this is out of general fund.
Correct.
Will it be police and fire committee or finance committee?
Well, it was police and fire last time.
Yeah, I know, but now we're talking about, we're going to be talking about paying for it.
I'm okay with staying with police and fire.
Okay, that's fine. That's what we'll do. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All right. Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
All right, getting cameras. Thanks, Chief. Hope I'm never on one.
It'll be erased, don't worry.
All right, item 12. Planning Commission reporting recommendations. Aaron, Aaron?
All right, good afternoon, Council Mayor. Patsy is out today. It is her birthday, so I'm on film for her.
What gives her the right to, because it's just because it's her birthday, not showing her work? It's not that she ever does, but I just asked.
There you go, there you go. But I'm in her stead today, so I have three items before you tonight. The first is a resolution approving a conditional use for Ann Mark Woby Lane Apartments LLC at 580 East Randall Woby Lane, Set 4th and Ordinance Number 4030. This is basically, they're going to be subdividing off the back of the property. We had to take it to Planning Commission for a tandem lot approval. They are solely doing this for financial reasons for the development of the property. So they will be doing a full multifamily establishment on the backside. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right. If there are, yeah, he read it.
First, it would be adopted.
Second, I'm sorry, I didn't know you had read it either.
We have a motion and a second. Now, are there further questions or comments? Anyone in the audience on this? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Very seven, zero.
All right, we're continuing with the trend tonight. We have two additional tandem lot conditional uses.
These are the, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Aaron. These are the three that we moved forward two weeks earlier than we normally would have because we're trying to help the developers get going on.
That is correct. Typically, as you're familiar, Council, our tandem lots or our conditional uses will go to that next meeting. And all these folks had closing deals, and I know that's often asked, so excuse me on that. But they usually have closing deals that are close to this. So this was kind of essential for them to be able to close and move forward on their development projects. to be able to close and move forward on their development projects, so.
We've done that before, I, I, uh, I give permission when, when I'm sure planning can, can get them ready. So, and, and they, they work to get them ready.
Right.
And what's the conditional use they're going for, anyway?
Uh, these are all conditional uses for tandem lots, so whenever they do not meet our zoning guidelines for the appropriate amount of frontage, uh, city council saw and deemed back in the day to go ahead and make that go to, uh, planning commission for, to address the issues if there are any. With these tonight, you know, we didn't seem that there, they've met all the ordinances that we asked for, and, uh, planning commission did recommend these for approval to come to you all, all three of these items.
Do we have the right, uh, image?
For the, Austin, go to the second one, please. There we go.
My only, my only confusion, what's the, what's the, I understand lots, but what's the conditional use that we're going for? Or what they ask for?
Conditional use is required to create a tandem lot.
Oh.
We always do this.
Not normally what we think of.
That's a Patsy-ism, okay.
Yeah, it's one of those, when the, so when you, when you develop the lot, and it's not on the run of, of public right-of-way, so they would have to get to it by an access easement. We don't necessarily promote those a hundred percent, but we do understand in our city that is developing out, we are not, uh, we don't have any easy lots available anymore. So they've kind of built out around, as you can see, on most of these images, most of the infrastructure is in and around these, and you have these long, narrow lots. So just as a control mechanism, we bring it to the, uh, planning commission, and they make a recommendation for it. If it meets the guidelines of the conditional use, then they bring it forward to, to council.
So once there, once the lot is split, and I assume it's split in two, into-
Uh, the, this one in particular, right here, will have two lots up front, and then it will have a large lot on the back. We have a large scale that is, uh, going in on the, on the top portion for a actual Myers Car Wash, I think is, it's been full development review. And, uh, this just allows them to lease out that portion, or developer sell off that portion, gives flexibility for the developer not to have to purchase this large, big lot.
Once they're split, though, which, this one's three, split into three different lots?
Yes, sir.
What you're saying, once they're split, basically, they're not subject to a conditional use or anything?
No, sir, it will stay with the land and, uh, the-
What does, the conditional use?
The conditional use will. For all conditional uses that we give within the city, the planning commission can remove it at any time if they do not meet the conditions of that. So, we do have a lot more development control over that, uh, or regulatory control, um, from a city standpoint, so.
Okay. So, it would like, if they were to develop the back lot somehow, it would give more control?
It, it does, yes, sir. Yeah, if they don't meet the requirements, if it doesn't develop, or some of that nature, you can come in and say, put additional stipulations on it. Yeah, we just happen to have, uh, it's very unusual for us to have three at any given time. Usually, we only have one, maybe every quarter.
And then I'd have three.
We just happen to have three, and, uh, it's honestly, it's, it's a pretty good thing, because it means that some of our hard lots to get to are actually coming and seeing developed nowadays. So, uh, that tells us that we're on the, you know, things are, are looking good for Springdale.
Okay, you want to read this one, Aaron?
Sure. So this is a, just like the first, it's a resolution for a conditional use for, uh, DH Junkin Produce Incorporated at forty-five seventy-nine West Sunset Avenue, set forth in ordinance number, uh, four oh three oh.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Three, seven, zero.
All right, so just like the, the previous two, um, this is a resolution approving a conditional use for Antigrid at twenty-three-ten and twenty-two sixty-two North Forty Street, set forth in ordinance number four oh three oh. And, uh, they will be splitting off the back half, there will be a four-acre parcel in the back half, a four-acre parcel in the middle. And, uh, this one just is a long, narrow lot that no one has, uh, been able to access, and the subdivisions have kind of built around, and we actually got someone that's going to come in and do very low development, uh, because this is a single-family, two-zoned area. So you'll just see a one or two houses go over this area, so. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Petition be adopted.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Three, seven, zero, and I wanted, I wanted to point out that in each of these three resolutions, the vote of the planning commission is in the resolution at the council.
Yeah. Yes, every one of these was recommended for, uh, for, recommended to you all, so.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you.
Item thirteen, street and CIP committee report and recommendations, Chairman Rick Evans, Rick?
Last week, street and CIP, and have one resolution on the agenda tonight, it was brought to the- authorizing the extension, extension of an engineering service contract for the extension of Harbor Avenue from Forty-Eighth Street to Goodson.
I'll move the resolution pass.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Further questions or comments?
Yes.
Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Forty-eighth is, forty-eighth is on the east side of the interstate, correct?
Yes, no, forty-eighth's on the west.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It'll run, basically, it, it runs from forty-eighth to Goodson.
Okay, got you, yeah, all right. Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, Denise?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Three, seven, zero.
Okay, item fourteen, Parks and Rec Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Mike Lawson, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, we met last week, we've got one item on the agenda, it was recommended for approval. Um, it's a resolu, resolution authorizing the execution of construction manager contract for Tyson Park Renovations. It's actually naming Flint Co., and it's at five point five percent, which is in line with what we've done in the past, that it was recommended for approval.
Move, Rick?
Second.
Motion and second, are there any further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Three, seven, zero.
All right, item fifteen, Finance Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Jeff Watson, Jeff?
Two items came from the Finance Committee, both of them with recommendation for approval. The first item, or is item fifteen A, and the title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Authorizing the Sale of a Portion of Property Located East of One-Eleven South Main Street to Tao Dole Rentals LLC."
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, are there any further questions or comments?
I will, I'll recuse.
Okay, thank you, Amelia. Anyone else? All right, Denise?
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Three, six, zero, one recusal.
Okay.
Second item, uh, comes from Public Works Department in regards to a budget amendment to basically move funds from one position to another. Maybe I can have Wyman talk about this if we need to, but, uh, titled, this resolution was also recommended for approval. The title of this resolution is "A Resolution Amending the Twenty-Nineteen Budget of the City of Springdale Street Department."
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, are there further questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Three, seven, zero.
All right, item sixteen is the Police and Fire Committee and, uh, Councilmember Amelia Williams, Amelia?
Uh, committee met, we considered item sixteen A, voted to move it forward to council, recommendation for approval. It's a resolu, resolution authorizing a change in authorized staff of the police department.
Okay. Any questions for, uh, well, I know we discussed this, uh, at length in committee, question?
Resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, Chief Peters is here.
Chief, this doesn't mean that you're going to hire Bob Cottle, does it?
I, I haven't seen his application.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any real questions? All right, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Three, seven, zero.
Uh, next item, also, uh, moved to council with recommendation for, for approval, a resolution accepting the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of Springdale Fire Station Number Eight.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, resolution. Any comments or questions?
Might want to announce the-
Yeah, we're, we're very pleased, uh, we, the numbers came in, the not-to-exceed price, for construction of Station Eight, and it's at, uh, just over three million. So it's right in the, uh, we're very pleased with that, virtually the same price as, as Station Seven was. Uh, just, just a few dollars difference. And, uh, so we're very thankful for that, and, uh, ready to move forward. This will be Station Eight on the corner of Conneer and Huntsville. Anyone else? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Three, seven, zero.
All right, any comments from department heads? Yes, Chief?
Wanted to let everyone know that, um, this is Police Week, National Police Week, and tomorrow, we'll be hosting the, uh, the regional Fallen Officers Memorial Ceremony. It'll be at Shiloh Square at two PM. Everyone's invited to attend, uh, it's a regional event that we, uh, host it every three years. So, uh, we won't host it again for three years, so if you're available at, at two PM at Shiloh Square tomorrow, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Any comments from council? City Attorney?
No, sir.
I do have one, and, and just in the form of an announcement, uh, y'all are aware of the, uh, needs assessment, that we're going to, that, that we're going to be doing for our Parks and Rec Department this summer. Steve Ditmore, Assistant Dean of Recreation and Sports Management, and, uh, in the College of Education and Health Professionals at the U of A, uh, he and his, uh, team will be overseeing that and, uh, facilitating it. It will include a couple of public meetings, and I wanted to go ahead and announce the dates for those, and you'll, we'll, we'll do this a lot more, Ashley, uh, over the coming weeks, but June third and June fifth. Uh, June third is a committee night, and all of our committee meetings, both of our committee meetings in June will be in this room anyway, because we're, our annual audit is going to be taking place, and they're going to have the multipurpose room, uh, used, occupied, yeah. So what we can do, the, uh, the meeting on the third, Monday night, the third, we can have our committee meeting as normal, and then, at the conclusion of our committee meeting, or at seven PM, approximately seven PM, seven to nine, we'll hold that first public meeting, for, where people can come and give their input about, uh, future needs, future, uh, facility needs, uh, programming needs, those types of things at Parks and Rec.